Welcome to the Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, April the 6th. If you're joining us virtually, comment in the public comment portion of the meeting. Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we'll have Commissioner Horton lead us into the pledge. Please stand for a moment of silence.
Do you want me to say the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great power of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
You have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is statement and remarks from citizens. This is for anything that's not on our agenda for tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Helen Haynes. I live at 1170 Chadwick Drive, and I just had a brief comment. I would appreciate the five minutes if possible, but I had to comment on the March 2nd decision regarding Dave Mulkey's Stone Store, the storage house, and the mercantile. In the South, there's an old expression that goes like this. It describes a person's actions in a certain situation. It's called putting lipstick on a pig. The planning staff and their analyses of the Stone Store location called it what it is, never called it what it is, an industrial category business. It's a building materials, masonry, and landscaping supply store with outdoor storage. Section 205.10 under the zoning ordinance says list this type of business as a business whose normal operations and processes would be considered objectionable in other districts by reason of the emission of noise, vibration, dust, smoke, dust, gases, fumes, radiation, or other potential fire and safety hazards. For over 25 years, the Stone Store operated under this appropriate category. A building materials dealer will not be found under any other category in the county ordinances. The planning staff states in their zoning impact analysis, the stone store has a unique character. Current site makes this property unique. It is located uniquely as you enter Watkinsville. Staff analysis states the Stone Store will be compatible with retail, office, and service-oriented development. The Stone Store in the Civic Center Character District conforms, in quotes, "more to the retail shopping." The outdoor storage would be part of a retail establishment. I had a meeting with Director of Planning, Guy Herring. I asked him what his staff's definition of retail was. He told me it was the dictionary's definition. My Webster's dictionary defines retail as "the sale of goods, of articles individually or in small quantities selling directly to the consumer." The bulk of the Stone Store's products are sold in bulk to contractors, landscaping companies, schools, sports organizations, and individuals with hardscape or landscape projects. Their products are river rocks, crushed stones, sand, soil, mulch, landscape boulders, fieldstone, palletized riverstone, flagstone, snapped flagstone, infield mix, and brick dust for ball fields. This is not a description of a retail business. Even an individual's purchase of gravel or rocks would likely be in the hundreds of pounds. Mr. Herring called the Stone Store a retail store. He and his staff have created their own definition, very different from Webster's and common usage. I asked Mr. Herring what criteria his staff used to determine their recommendations that you accepted. He said they're just opinions. They're just their subjective opinions. I asked, were any recent studies on health hazards done considering the silica particulate or brick dust of the business that would be 50 feet from a subdivision? No. Were there any realtors consulted or any property surveys done regarding developments contiguous to subdivisions and property values? No. Yet, the staff felt qualified to state, "With a six-foot fence and six-foot fir trees and an eight-foot fence around the storage area, this would be sufficient to mitigate noise and hazards for a neighborhood 50 feet away." Further, they stated unequivocally, in quotes, "There will be no negative effect of adjoining property values." No negative effect. "The development of this site will only increase nearby property values." That is unfathomable to me. Opinions that can't be supported by facts are worthless opinions. And a building materials store that sells masonry, landscaping supplies, and has outdoor storage, no matter what you call it, is an industrial business.
That's the end of your time, ma'am.
You have put lipstick on this pig, but it still smells, looks, and acts like a pig.
That's the end of your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone virtually?
Every one.
Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
That's me.
A couple things. Just April 4th through the 10th is National Library Week, so if you get a chance to go by the library and tell them thank you for what they do. Also, there'll be a Oconee County Mass vaccination event. This is scheduled for the first shot on April the 17th. And this will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Registration is required. If you go to our website, you'll see the link in order to register. Our next item is to approve the minutes. This is from our regular meeting on March 2nd, Town Hall meeting from March 24th, and the Agenda City meeting from March 30th.
I make a motion to approve all three as submitted.
I've got one. I think it was on March the 2nd.
Sorry.
I listed it voting on that variance group with my neighbor, so if you just kind of abstain.
Very good.
All right, second. Okay. Within a minute.
All right, very good. We have a motion of second to approve the minutes as amended here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Now we'll move into our hearing and actions on zoning matters. The first rezone is 21-0007. This is Diane Holly Downs at 1521 Cole Springs Road, 7.22 acres, going from AG to AR.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is a rezone P21-0007. Holly Downs located in this portion of the county, right off of Cole Springs Road, just before you get to Overlook Bridge. This is the overall aerial of the property and the parcel number A04017. It is currently zoned AG in the country-states character area. And again, the request is to rezone from AG to AR in order to subdivide into two lots and to bring the property into compliance. There's two single-family dwellings on the property as it is now. This is the concept plan that shows the split of the two parcels, proposed parcels with the existing structures. And again, staff recommends approval with the one condition. Planning Commission also recommends approval with that condition.
Now we'll hear from the honors.
Thank you. My name's Trey Downs. First, I want to thank y'all for my appointment to the Board of Tax Assessors. I look forward to that. So this home was built by Dickens Builders in 2013. We've been out there for eight years. All proper permits were obtained. No corners were cut. So we did everything that we were supposed to do, and I guess apparently at some point y'all changed the zoning. So when my mother chose to give me the land and the house that I live in, we had to spend about $3,600 to have it, you know, replat, have the plat drawn, have the corners and everything marked. So I hope that you will pass it as the Planning Department's recommended approval for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for this rezone? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments at this time and open up any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve rezone number 21-0007. Diane Holly Downs, 1521 Cole Springs Road, 7.22 acres, AG to AR.
Second.
With one condition.
With a condition. We have a motion and a second to approve rezone 21-0007 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is to consider variance number P21-0027. This is Kyle. I asked you how to say it now. I can't say it. 4169 Whitlow Ridge Drive. This is reduced setback of an accessory building for proposed detached garage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P21-0027 located just north of Bishop in the Whitlow Ridge subdivision. This is the aerial of the subject property. It's currently zoned AR in the country-states character area. You have in your packets the concept plan showing the proposed garage accessory structure and the distance from the property line, reducing from 15 to eight feet on that side. These are representative photos of the location and of the proposed structure. And again, they're requesting the variance from 15 feet on the side setback to eight feet for the detached garage. Staff recommends it does meet all necessary conditions to grant the special accession variance and recommends approval with the one condition. It's reduced to only eight feet in that area of encroachment.
All right, Kyle, now you come up.
I'm just asking for the eight feet. I've got my approval from my neighborhood and my next door neighbor. I have a letter from both of them with the approval and also from the environmental health saying it's all right and that the septic lines and everything are approved, and I won't be encroaching any of those. So that's all.
Very good.
I've asked for your approval. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for this variance? Anyone virtually? Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments at this time and open up any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve rezone, I mean variance number P21-0027. Kyle Biggins and Laura Biggins, 4169 Whitlow Ridge Drive, .70. Request reduced setback of an accessory building for proposed detached garage with one condition.
We have a motion and a second to approve variance number P21-0027 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is consider one appointment to the Planning Commission. This is for an unexpired term.
I'd like to nominate Courtney Matt Elder for the term that begins immediately and expires 9/30/2023.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider settlement agreement among the Oconee County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Casualty Insurance Company.
This has a little history to it, and I'll just remind everybody. I had a lawsuit a couple, three years ago between the county and the owners of Westland subdivision and also part of that subdivision. And as part of the settlement of that, we agreed that we would allow them to pursue collection efforts on four bonds that were posted out there. There's a $91,429 performance bond, $192,278 maintenance bond, a $400,000 performance bond. That's on the pump station, and a $83,964.30 maintenance bond on the pump station. The first two were street maintenance and street bonds. Henry Hartman, who was the lawyer that we dealt with with Westland, who's a very capable lawyer at a big law firm in Atlanta, vigorously pursued this, and he was able to settle with the surety on behalf of Westland, and that benefits us because that money will go, this money will go toward the installation of the infrastructure out there, which is what the bonds were designed to do. The surety has agreed to reimburse the county $91,429 and $400,000. Those are on the performance bonds. The way it'll work, that money will be paid. I don't think we'll ever actually even have to take possession of the money, but it will be spent by the Westland people, and the surety will reimburse them. Henry will kind of act as the go-between, keep us fully informed of what's happening. If anything needs to be signed, he'll come to us and ask for it. Both of the maintenance bonds will be renewed, and the current surety will pay the cost of renewing those bonds. So it's pretty close to a full win absent that they had to fight over it for, you know, six, seven months to get it done. So even though we agreed that we would allow them to pursue it because we're the ones that are the beneficiary of the bonds, we have to agree to the settlement. And I recommend that the board approve this and that we allow them to proceed.
Any questions, Daniel on this? Any public comment? Anyone virtually?
Very good.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the settlement agreement by and among Oconee County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Casualty Insurance Company, as stated.
Who did the second?
Chuck.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider a budget amendment for the Coroner's Office as well as Parks and Recreation. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, citizens of Oconee County. I request tonight, we have a need to disburse some unbudgeted funds. I request tonight, we have a need to disburse some unbudgeted funds, and so I'd request for you to consider a budget amendment at this time. The two offices that are affected are the Coroner's Office, and he was budgeted for professional services. These are investigation calls, thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And we're not going to have enough to complete our fiscal year. So I recommend at this time we amend that budget by five thousand to allow him to continue those, those activities. Parks and Recreation has a, on a lighter note, has a donation for memorial picnic table in the amount of one thousand and fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents. And they want to call it the Cindy McKee Memorial Picnic Table. And so I'd recommend that, a request that we amend that budget for that to allow us for that expenditure. If there are any questions at this time, I'd be glad to ask, answer those.
We do, we do budget an average for the calls, and they're just higher than normal. There's nothing out of the ordinary other than a lot of investigations. Any questions from? Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will entertain a motion at this time?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments for the Coroner's Office and the Parks and Rec Department. I mean, the amount of funds for the coroner that the Giddens said and to accept the memorial picnic table.
Second. Very good. Have a motion and second to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent agenda?
No, sir.
Will entertain a motion at this time?
Make a motion to approve this consent agenda item as submitted.
Your motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We do not have need of an executive session, so with that, Commissioner Sax.
Make a motion adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.